I can't get these faces on the side if I'm over there. I, I, I don't respect that. It's an infringement on my, on my right to report the public meeting and, and get the faces. It's not, because I can't get my greens face if I'm over there.
Don't make a fuss, we'll just report this to the state people as well.
Yeah, I mean you could, yeah, you can challenge it if you want in court.
Well, not in court, we're taking, you know, I'm a member of the historic preservation group and I've had talks with them today on the phone and I was gonna say that a whole lot of documents this morning got way late, but now tonight's meeting is going to be more documents.
And that has nothing to do with the restrictions.
That's the ACLU that I need to get.
You can call the ACLU.
I already have, I've already filed a complaint.
For this meeting, we ask that you please abide by the rules that we passed.
The rules are unjust, and in the case of unjust rules, then resistance is necessary to protect our First Amendment rights. No, I'm not gonna thank you for restricting my First Amendment rights.
No, I thank you. The respectful response to thank you for agreeing to, uh, with our rules.
No. I, I don't respect these rules. This rule is un, is not deserving of respect, so I'm sorry.
Before you get started, does everybody know that New York Beagle after almost fifty years has left? Because the high school kids were stealing their tip jars and causing so many problems. Sad, I've been going there since there, went there last Sunday and they were gone.
They moved, they're in another location.
I know where they are, they're up by thirteen in Southfield.
I understand.
But they moved because of problems with the high school.
They moved from Southfield to Southfield?
Where, where, where did they move to?
The shopping center up by CBS, or a few doors down.
It's a much nicer location.
From Southfield.
Well, they didn't have high school kids stealing their tip jars.
It's a nice, much nicer location.
That's your opinion. You're entitled to your opinion.
They've moved from Southfield to Southfield, so.
To avoid being, having an property stolen.
Dan, I don't mean to be combative, but this is not, that business was always in the city of Southfield and it doesn't matter.
My dear, I would say when the shopping center opened, okay?
That business was always in Southfield, they moved from Southfield to Southfield.
For what? We just bend on that location. And the point that matters is that they moved because the high school kids were stealing tip jars and working. Yeah, but now they can't walk here so easily. I walked to that area store. My, that's my kids and I walked there. Bob, I walked there last summer with my kids, summer school, too, and now they go there, well, they used to go there themselves. Now they don't. It's quite close to my house, actually.
It's, it sounds pertinent to Southfield citizens, it's not the same.
Well, it is because it's Southfield schools that created the problem. Very, very close to my house. There's a cut through, which you don't know about, there's a cut through to that.
Okay, well, let's start. First, we're talking about the city council study session and we have the draft and five thousand, which is the last one.
Six oh three.
Alright, so this is just a continuation of the conversation we started a week ago regarding you guys' budget for next year. So, we're here just to kind of solicit some more feedback from you guys, see what you guys are thinking. This kind of carry, this kind of carries into the IMP as well as we talked about, Public Act thirty-three and forty utilize it for this budget. And at what rate, whether it's a financial review, community's recommendation, or if we want to modify that a little bit. Nothing major has changed since we was last discussion, there was some small modifications just based on our conversation. But the biggest change is related to data processing and assessments. That's actually our contract with Oakland County for assessing services. As councils aware and if anyone's been following Oakland County, they kind of have a, a last minute change to their assessing processes where they're looking essentially nearly double everyone's assessing fees for all the units they contract with them. So as we're writing down the budget, we're gonna budget for that, we do have an RFP out right now to see if there are any other private companies or municipalities that kind of want to take us on as a client and see what prices are gonna be. But we're gonna just budget for that change, just out of safety. So other than that, here to get some more feedback before we finalize the budget book and have public hearing if you guys make change.
So just, uh, you and I had an email exchange about the taxes and benefits. Line items that appear in a couple of different categories. It makes sense that they appear in different categories because some employees are paid out of the GAO fund, some are paid out of local roads, uh, nearly all are paid out of local roads. Uh, major roads and, um, we have one employee who's paid entirely out of water and so it makes sense that they have, they appear in different areas. Uh, but, uh, you provided me with a breakdown of what is included in those line items, so just from, so it's not public pressure.
Yeah, so for employee tax and benefits, essentially, the social, our social security contribution, retirement contribution, which ranges from five to nine percent depending on employee, department head contracts. Uh, retiree health, healthcare savings contributions, just three percent. Eighty percent of the medical coverage from the city and the employee, the other twenty percent. Uh, dental vision life and long-term disability, such as Medicare. So that, that's everything that goes into those accounts. So we do our best to estimate those, we do have some decent hard numbers for a lot of it. Uh, the biggest challenge is healthcare, since our plan does, like everyone else, changes come January one slash April one. Put in a little buffer, most likely healthcare costs are gonna go up six, ten percent again. We won't know that for sure until next year.
And there's, there's no, no pension costs, what legacy pension costs in there is there, or is that?
Um, for, for a couple, for a couple of items, for example, police, you'll see it the most, where you'll see the retiree contributions. There's a, like, in the budget, if there's a line that says retiree, that's what it's for. Create your retiree healthcare that we're still paying for, especially in the police side, so we're not sixty-five yet, or pension costs. And then measuring the redo of the fifty thousand dollar contribution number, so, but that's just offset and percentage of some.
Out of, out of curiosity, how has the, how would you say the Lexapro grant services, how has that been working for us?
I, I think overall it's been good. For seventy-five hundred bucks, it seems like a lot, but they have essentially completed our one big grant for this year, which was on DNR grant. Uh, so we're working internally to finalize what kind of grant will come over this year or two of their contract. But they have also reviewed pretty much every other grant, every other grant we've written, they'll do quick review and post opening changes. So far, I think it's been good, uh, if we can get them to be in our grant, then I think we'll a hundred percent be worth it.
Yeah.
But it, it is one of those things where it, it's a little bit of a gamble, it's, hey, we're gonna write this, hope we get it, if we get it, part somewhere, if not, they, they can still write better stories than I can personally, so.
Yeah, so you're worth seventy-five hundred dollars in order to have an opportunity to have a really great grant.
Yeah, and I know Austin's worked with them a lot with me, they're, they're responsive, they're great writing, they take feedback very well. Um, so if they do write something or like, hey, you're, you're off for what this meeting actually is, a little bit, they can pivot very easily, so.
It'll be hard for us to handle it on our own.
Yeah, so my, just overall, kind of, Art, your comment. So we, we have a balanced budget with the Public Act thirty-three money, the five hundred eighty thousand dollars, while maintaining all services. And so if we decide not to do the Public Act, then we have to decide, I'm making some cuts and appreciate the fact that in, in the write-up, you put a list of all the potential items that, that we would have to choose from, or there should be others as well, but those, those seem to be the most obvious ones. Yeah, so I, I appreciate you doing that. I, I do have a bunch of questions, you have more questions?
I have more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so the, the memo mentions that, um, the budget takes into account tax exempt, estimated tax exempt properties.
Yeah, so this year, since Michelle and I had more time, we could dive into it, we actually seen this like a little bit. Um, we've got, we have a good estimate now on how many tax exempt properties we're gonna get, so how much we're actually gonna lose in tax capture this next year. We briefly touched on it last time, it's gonna probably be eighty to a hundred thousand dollars and tax capture will lose because tax is in our place.
And that's where that five or six percent decrease was in, in the property tax?
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, one of the things that's mentioned in the list of things that should be cut if we don't pass a Public Act thirty-three, uh, village, is a full-time position estimated at between eighty and a hundred and ten thousand. Does that number include benefits, like if only burden cost of that employee?
Roughly, yeah. Uh, because naturally with police, you, we know their sal, what their salary, for example, if it's gonna be police, it's gonna be patrol officer, so we know what their salary is based on their contract next year. Um, so it's a rough estimate, I'd have to go based on seniority and then we're paying insurance gambling, is it single family?
Yeah, depending on which employee would potentially be cut, that would also reduce the cost of, you know, taxes and benefits in the specific category that that employee paid on.
Correct. Yeah, so yeah, that, that's not for that range, because it's, it's a rough ballpark based on, somebody I'm gonna say on post-insurance plus or patrol at their rate, post-insurance.
Um, there's a line item under accounting for ma, manner, which is our auditor, but then there's a second one for account consulting for five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so this, this.
Can you each other, say the pages that you're on?
Looking at my notes.
Oh, okay.
Um, but that's specifically why I.
This would be page ten in the packet. One oh one, one hundred and eight tens they count, but. Yeah, so this is just a minor, so for example, if we do have, uh, major accounting questions for ma or throughout the year, that's outside their scope for auditing, assuming there's gonna be a bill, um, so we just budget that.
Okay, so this would be like additional, above and beyond what we're contracted for support that we're asking for from our auditor.
Correct.
So this is no longer like, um, uh.
No, this is, this would be day-to-day services that we're usually planning, so just, just be something with more outside the, it's not, yeah.
Plan outside the, it's not, yeah, an external auditor or external, okay, okay. Those are all the questions I have about the budget, thank you.
So should we, today be operating as like, just in case, like, what are the things that maybe could be cut or, or not? Because, like, personally, I'm not sure if I'd wanna, you know, I'm not sure if I'm on board for the full, um, mills, three mills, so I'm not sure. And so I'm wondering, is today a good day to like discuss, like, what are the things that we might be okay with?
That, that's what I'm kind of hoping to get from this, whether you guys, naturally, we can't decide until the next meeting if we're public hearing, we just know. Anyways, but if we have a good idea of going into that meeting, hey, if we end up deciding to go with two mills, these are A, B, C, D, we can come to a quickened budget, that way we can still approve a balanced budget the next meeting and move on. So, for example, if you guys go with two mills, I think one of the little anchors is emulate their park project match. It's a park project, it'd be great, but it's a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and we just won't be able to do that. So that, that could be something, but, yeah.
Yeah, two mills is three hundred eighty-two thousand, right, so that'd be a hundred and something, right, so it'd be roughly about that. So if we just, if we just get rid of that, that would make up almost the whole difference.
Uh, yeah, I guess the big question relative to that is, in the budget, should we be accounting for three mills? Or should we be more conservative and account for one mill?
I, I mean, I was thinking about this the other, the same question the other day, and I was thinking, I mean, it's, I mean, certainly we can discuss it now, but I think it becomes more of a discussion if, if we turn down the Public Act thirty-three, then at that meeting, I think we would then, you know, have a discussion of more definitive discussion in terms of, in final, in terms of what we're gonna get rid of, but I mean, there's no reason why we can't.
Yeah, it would be a great thing that, like, at least see if we're all on the same page now before it's like, we're in a, you know, in a motion.
Yeah, you at least have some sense.
Yeah.
Agreed.
So I think we just start with the list, we just start with the list.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I was just thinking about something regarding.
I thought you, I thought you were thinking Southway, I thought you were.
Yeah, because it, it's, I don't think that we, well, we're in this particular meeting, but we discuss exactly if we don't, if, you know, one, if you don't pass it, one, if you only do two. What does that look like? I, I would like to do that.
Or would it be an option for two and one? Like, do we discuss if we only go for one?
Then I did have a question, there's no, I'm sorry for.
Are you fine?
There is no way to, in, in not saying that this whole, it just to take, uh, some employees down to part-time.
You could, and then it just becomes a discussion of who and realistically we have to replace an employee because they're, they're gonna go somewhere else.
I mean, everything, you know.
I mean, everything's okay.
The, I mean, everything's speculative right now, also, this is the whole what if, it's just maybe look at, look at different ways. It can speak with half part-time, and yeah.
Was the DPS backhoe supposed to be like something real, like guaranteed to pay for every year?
Budget for it, because it, it's piece of equipment, in my opinion, talking about the thing needs.
Yeah, it gets used a lot, did, uh, was the research? You can just pride it, so like.
Yeah, and it'll be allocated fifty to general funds, twenty-five to large, twenty-five to smaller.
I mean, I get that, I was just saying, like, I'm just trying to go through certain things to see, like, what's, down, what's unnecessary.
So I, yeah, I had a question about that backhoe too, because it hasn't been mentioned in previous study sessions, have we looked at, like, buying a used backhoe instead of, and I assume this hundred thousand dollar number is budgeted for a current year.
It, it should be, yeah, and we, we really talked about the last study session where if this item stays in the budget, and try to budget for a new one, and then we just kind of have to play the auction game, where if we do see one come up at auction, we may come up, that's where I'd come to you guys and say, will you, hey, will you authorize up to X amount of dollars to be able to bid and get this backhoe?
Right, so you buy a backhoe, maybe buy for less than a hundred thousand dollars, then that, but that, that, the remainder of that budget item can be used for other purposes or put to, at the end of the general fund.
And this might be, uh, repeating what you said, but this is for a brand new one.
Correct.
And, uh,
I'm not sure.
So you're, you're okay with, um, purchasing a new one?
Yeah, I, I think there would be five, naturally, within reason, we're not gonna go get a fifteen-year-old backhoe, but there are some that are going to auction, you see that over in the past five years. It's just like any piece of equipment, probably five years old, but has a thousand hours on it, you don't want that, so.
You don't care what you're getting, it's on the side.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be playing the game with the DPS group, who knows the equipment better than me, it's, hey, one, who you'll see it, that's gonna be more make sense. Um, we're not gonna drive forward and go look at backhoe, but.
And how old is the one that we have?
Oh, I didn't, I have written down it, so I have it, but.
And it's not repairable, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's a wild pass, it's, it's useful, like.
Are you, so the community room roof, is like a full, like, replacement?
Yeah, so the, the roof or the community room is just a typical, like, tarred membrane roof, uh, so hopefully just be to replace that. And as you guys say, if you go in the community room, you look up, you see the one spot. It's hard to just patch membrane roofs, especially when they're this old, so you best just replace it. And then at that point, you have brand new one, that's what we're hoping for.
Now, if you replace the roof, would you replace, or would that be like a different project, like replace the ceiling tiles?
It'd be a different project, so, natural for us to replace that first, use ceiling tiles without good, basically, not if you're not solving the problem, so. Do that project and plan for the tiles later.
I mean, I never wanted to have to go first, but I'm just saying.
At least the phone system is upgraded.
At least I know you're looking at this, kind of thinking at least fifteen years.
The phone system on a, um, uh, important basis was replaced in twenty twenty-two. It is, um, out, outside of the serviceability right now, it is an antiquated system at this point. And I have been asking several contractors to look at it, it would, um, entail a lot more than just buying phones, because we are a digital system and we have to change to be voice over IP, which means that we have to actually get some internet cables ran, and some of ours are cat three, cat four, and we're supposed to be cat five, cat six. And it also would affect the fax lines as well. So I have estimates to do that, and in doing so, they are also going to clean out all the older technology and things like that. So there's all types of detailed information.
Do you feel like twenty thousand dollars is enough to do all that?
We're, we're, at least in the middle of, like, we're, this would essentially be like the main down payment, one of the big things where you're changing out the phone system, most likely changing phone providers. So, part, part of the cost we're looking at is, hey, you pay this upfront cost, and then you set your monthly fee after that. So, we're, work with the vendors, um, a lot of them, we've seen, what, thirty, forty thousand dollars upfront.
To, to do it all, it's, it's thirty-five, which is to swap out what we need, because on the police side, they need for each phone, a separate line ran. And then we have the three high-line phones to reach the police during after-hours times, and the two faxes on both sides. And that includes new phones and putting everything away neatly, um, in a secured rack, as it should be, and being compliant with the new government regulations. So, it's thirty-five at this point, and then our monthly bill will go down, 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 and that's a one-time fee with brand-new equipment to get us to the voice over IP, and that's basically the same with this on-premise or cloud storage. It's not much of a difference. And that's going with the most basic phones that we can go with, that will do what we need to do.
So technically, this is not the correct one, no, that's in here.
Well, for, for genuine purposes, we essentially want that down payment route, and spread out the remaining fee in your phone bill for the next five years or so. Because we knew, naturally, we know twenty thousand dollars is a lot to eat, if we put thirty-five, forty in here, we think this would kind of, want to cut for a little bit easily.
And they're willing to do the down payments, I talked with all of them, because they want to do the cash or just payments, and they all said it's okay, whatever you would, to put down a down payment, they will work with us and those do that.
Who is, who is some of the providers?
Believe it or not, it's all outsourced telecom companies, like K and L Telecom, uh, Jackson, uh, Billita, had somebody walk through the building last, uh, Friday, but we didn't get their bid yet. K and L did not finish giving us the rest of the information, B S and B that we are currently with, looked all through it, excuse me, and they gave us several different quotes and said they could do some step-by-step processes for us to try to break it up and spread the payments out. I had the company Advanced Electronics, who's been around for years, come out, he toured the building with me, this entails touring multiple places in the building, as well as, um, the phone connection areas in the building, and he never got back with us. Um, AT&T really just wants us to go to fiber optics for the internet, because the phones are ran on internet, and they would have to do that, it'd take them about a month to go a couple of blocks down and get to us, they're not charging us for that, you need the fiber optics, just we would be on fiber optics. And then they told us to find our, our own phone company, so K and L provided that, they provided the information for how much the phones would be. They also came back with their own cable in person, and never supplied us with information for that. And so I called some of the other, talked with some of the other city clerks near us, and, uh, most of them are not, um, completely happy with who they have, and so they kind of referred us right back to who we had gone through, B S and B, and the AT&T person who referred B S B and K and L.
Um, that's what I was gonna ask you, um, have we gone directly to the provider, because these are gonna be, but it's gonna be a third-party?
Shockingly, AT&T does not do office phones anymore, it's sourced out.
Okay, but then there's also some other companies too.
I'd be more than willing to have some of the others come by, I, I put out a, a couple of the feelers that I don't, didn't get a response from.
I was gonna ask you this, Lord, um, this is purely out of curiosity. What, uh, do we, do you know what all we receive out of this Southfield Library Services contract, purely?
What do you, what do you receive, or how much do we pay?
I mean, I, the contract is what, what?
One mill.
But I'm saying, like, what all services are we, like, is the community referring to through that contract?
I can reach out to Southfield, open up a receipt, they have, uh, just a good database of how many Lakerville residents have library cards essentially. But their, their services are gonna be everything, and I think the library offers, so I, you know, yeah, I can tell the library, you know their services, I have a full true list of what everything they do nowadays, but I can reach out to them, see if they have a good data set.
Um, I noticed that the community center expenditure includes land for oversight and cleaning services, but then we also have a line of, um, for custodial under building grounds? Is there a reason they're separated?
So, we, yeah, we, we count for them separately, so everything, so it's split, so anytime the pest comes in front of our tech and oversee that, we charge it on that one, you know.
Custodial.
To, no, to the community room, oversight, that's where we charge that. Uh, custodial, underbuilding grounds, essentially, just the day-to-day cleaning, everything.
Ah, got you, okay, that, that makes sense. That line is not that large, anyway, so I'm not sure it would make sense to cut it, if, uh, if you have to.
I got a bunch of detailed questions, uh, on the line, on the line items. The revenue for LCSa, is that local community stabilization? What is that? Page, page nine, two thirds of the way down.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's local community stabilization.
Okay, and then a few lines below that, uh, public service reimbursement, um, I'm guessing that's the DPW reverse interest utilities, it's just,
Correct.
names, the name seems to have changed since the last time I saw it, so. Yeah, you answered this last time, and I didn't take a note on it, I completely blanked it, but, um, the, the salaries and employee taxes and benefits going down? What, what was driving that?
We updated the cost split, so.
Oh, the cost split, right, okay.
So for example, Martha used a little chunk per pay to general fund, when in reality, it should be all utilities, but that's the very change.
I feel like I know what you're saying, but the employee assistance program, um, is that, that, uh, is that in, I mean, uh?
Yeah, so the mental health services.
Yes, that's what it was, okay, I was just trying to.
It's, it's a low-own place, just to be utilized by the police, right?
Yeah, on page fifteen, we don't, we don't have the total breakouts for the local road fund?
Oh, I know, so that's, I forgot, yeah.
Yeah, for the sewer department, page nineteen, um, the bond principal payment goes up by a hundred thou, seventy-five thousand dollars, something like that, what's, why is that going up? It's going from two fifty to, actually more than that, seven fifty, yeah, by eighty-five thousand? Pretty corporate increase.
It, it definitely goes up this next year, I'll double check with Michelle on that, see if our bonds get over, go, that much, I think.
You know, those are the big questions that I have.
When is this considered, um, technologies for a thousand dollars, and that's not much, it's gonna be under the, um, the DDA and it's under office supplies?
Yep, so that's for DDA and DDA for the budget for last, maybe, uh, for anything essentially technology, like, so if they do need something new, computer associated or something like that, that's what they'd be funding for that.
So for, I know this Southfield fire contract, I mean, so we haven't, got the updated contract.
Yeah, we said, yeah, we said to the mayor's office probably a month ago, reminding them that our contract expires in June, that, of course, it's gonna be doing, of course. Um, so I just have place owner in here, I updated five percent, as that's been the theme of our contract over the past few years, so my assumption is they're gonna do that, do that same thing. So that's the number we're going with, the budget right now.
I know we talked about this, but the Southfield dispatch contract, I asked you, like, about outsourcing that, and?
So, Chief, Chief and I had, Chief, um, I have reached out to a couple other municipalities who potentially do dispatch, just to get a rough ballpark number. Southfield by far, the chief has, uh, one of the entities said they would charge ten thousand dollars per person. So, eight full-time plus command plus chief plus our part-time, we're instantly at like a hundred forty thousand dollars for dispatch, so.
Right. And plus, I say, and we talked about this last time, wasn't there some interoperab, interoperability issues that we would have to deal with because?
Yeah, there, there would be those concerns, to make sure whatever entity we utilize has the radio capability to. Yeah, there, there would be those concerns to make sure whatever entity we utilize has the radio capability to communicate with us and Southfield. Uh, naturally, nine women centers are fantastic nowadays, and probably can, um, but that would be an issue we have to consider.
I wonder something, I should go through Oakland County?
That is one of the people we bought too.
Oh, so that is expensive, okay.
And then, can you touch on the DB, uh, the car replacement?
Yeah, so council did approve a new patrol car earlier this year that is on order, naturally, we don't know when it's gonna arrive yet. Um, but we do have two DB cars, one police chief utilizes, and then our lieutenant slash detective utilizes it already. Uh, they're both getting towards the end of their useful life, they're both north of a hundred fifty thousand miles. Uh, so to kind of stay on top of those, we're recommending replacing one of those with a new car, um, and then retiring the other one. Uh, but these cars are used essentially daily, uh, both Chief and Lieutenant slash Detective are on call nearly twenty-four seven, so they need the ability to get back to the city.
You said both of them were over a hundred fifty thousand miles?
Yeah, yeah, and the Chief did request to replace both of them this year, of course, um, we had a couple of them already, so we, we are just trying to keep up with the fleet, um, these cars shouldn't last, I mean, seven to ten years, they're not like typical patrol cars, where they're idling all the time and everything like that. So if we buy new ones, we should get a good, good long life out of them.
After the name, it's hard as well, right?
I mean, has it been in, um, like, the repair shop often this year?
I, I, I can check, I know they keep logs that are ordered, I know these ones, like, we're just saying they're not driven as hard, so it's typical tire rotations, oil changes, things like that, I don't think of any issue major transmissions or anything. I'll, I'll have to check.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, there's, uh, and one of the suggestions and things to potentially cut is listed leave services.